Welcome to The Source with your host Dr. C.T. Curry. And co-host Kobe Owens. News all across the nation. The Source. Stay in the loop in the city of Wilmington, Delaware. Work together for change in the community. A call to action to find the resources. The Source. The latest in news.
Good evening. This is Dr. Curry.
This is Kobe Owens.
And welcome to The Source and happy new year to all of you who continue to watch us and be a part of our lives. Kobe, it's a new year. I haven't seen you since last year. How you doing?
I am doing great. I'm doing great. Happy New Years, everyone, and I'm excited to be back for another year.
Another year. We're gonna try to do all we can and keep our shows exciting, sharing all the things that are happening in and around the city because there's a whole lot going on this week. But you know, we were reporting at the end of last year, a lot on where we didn't see much violence going on in the city as a result of shooting. But within the last week, and right after we had recorded the last show, there have been several people or several incidents where there was violence by gun. And the one that, the one of the ones that happened like that Friday after we went off the, after we recorded was one that happened at a funeral in the city. What do you know about that?
Yeah, so a 33-year-old man was shot and is in critical condition. He was shot at a funeral at the Congo Legacy Center on 28th Street over in the 9th Ward, 2nd District of the city of Wilmington. Again, it was unclear. Well, it happened outside. It was unclear if the individual was attending the funeral, leaving the funeral, what was going on. But shots rang out and there's videos on social media of people running every which way during the shooting, people getting knocked over and everything. It was a very scary experience for a lot of people.
You know, and it's really interesting because I've talked to many of my pastor friends here in the city who have decided that they were going to stop allowing those who are not members of their congregation to have their funerals at their churches. And I'm noticing that in some cases, not in all cases, a lot of times these funerals, you never know what is happening. And when you ring out your facility not knowing the people, now Legacy Center obviously is for that funeral home. But, but when I heard this, it alarmed us that we've watched some things happen where it almost went to something violent. So I just hope and trust that this brother make it through this. And I don't know whether the police know whether or not it was something going on with the, was it a young person's funeral?
It was a younger person's funeral, yes.
Okay. So, so we're just gonna have to keep our eye open and see what's happening, but we pray that he will not transition, given the shooting that occurred. But I did see some of the footage of people just video and everybody scattering all over the place. Something else happened just a little bit after that on, I think it was on the 1100 block of Davis Street. I don't even know where that is.
Yeah, that Davis Street is over by Gander Hill. By the prison over there, but a 28-year-old man was shot Saturday afternoon. He is in a hospital. He's in stable condition as of right now. And then, like you said, it was on that 1100 block of Davis Street. Again, that's the 3rd councilmatic district over there. Outside of him being in stable condition, there has been no further information released. And the police are looking for any clues. So again, if you know anything, Detective Kevin Nolan is looking. Please reach out to him.
Yeah, and I think that the police are trying, I think, I'm sensing that they are trying to bring some resolution to a lot of these cases. Because I'm watching the paper, we don't have a lot of them going on our show today, but a lot of people, they have been making some arrests in some of these cases. And then there was another double shooting that happened Monday night of last week in our city. What do you know about that?
Yeah, multiple people were shot on the 2300 block of Carter Street, which resulted in a 16-year-old boy being hospitalized in critical condition and a 15-year-old boy dying. It has not been confirmed about the manner, but from what I heard is it was multiple gunshots to the face. And I just want to point something out. These are young teens who are just starting their life, really, just getting a little bit of freedom. And people are saying that, you know, this is an ongoing beef between multiple gangs. I've never been in favor of gangs. I think if you think it's okay to take someone's life because they're selling a piece of grass or a substance that you can also sell, or they're standing on a block that neither one of you own, in front of a house that neither one of you own, or driving a car in which you're only leased but not own, this isn't property, right? You're beefing over property or, oh, he likes my girl, all this other stuff. It is nonsense and it's definitely not worth taking someone's life. And it's definitely not worth a heated five-minute spurta moment. Action will take the rest of your life away as well too, because whether you're Carter or not, right? You now have to live with taking someone else's life.
But you know, now that part, people, Kobe, you're absolutely correct. People, the person who did the shooting, you may believe that they have to live with that the rest of their life. But the way this generation is formed with, with all the video games that's going on, the value of life is not the same. When you reported, I heard the same thing you heard, that they, multiple times he was shot in his face. It was like he had, there was no regard for life. You know, and, and, but you spot on when you say the rest of, if, once he's caught, the rest of his life, he has to sit in a prison. And, or, well, I guess he had a death penalty, but he had to sit in prison and think about what he's done. But I just don't know what is happening with our generation. And there's many factors that we can probably look at and say, it's because of this, it's because of that, or it's because of the other. But I just don't know what to say. It's just really sad. 15-year-old, 16-year-olds, the people, we don't know how old the young man was who did the shooting.
Right.
You know, and whether he was a teenager too or older, we don't know that. But, but it's just really sad. Do you, do you think that, that there's something in the horizons for finding a way to save the community, this, this younger generation?
I hope, my hope is that we as a council sit down, we as a state sit down, and look at the gun violence epidemic as a public health issue.
It is.
And we also realize that we can almost map where these last few shootings have been to the areas that have been the most divested in by this city, by this mayor. His focus has been riverfront, has been downtown, has been development downtown, while ignoring communities. When the only major project you have is 17 new homes and changing a street from a two-lane to a bike lane in our whole district? Well, yes, you start to see a lot of violence like this because now the people aren't getting additional resources. And those social ills that they've been dealing with are now just compounding and growing even worse. And this is why I will continue to repeat that Mayor Mike Pizicki is a failure of a mayor. And I hope going forward, we can all sit down and look at this, not saying we're gonna stop all violence, right? But there is definitely a need in the city that is not downtown and not the riverfront that needs help right now. And it has been too long ignored.
Yeah, you know, Tuesday night when we did our Watch Night Service, my subject was better days are coming. And the current mayor was in my head at some point while I was preparing that message. Because I just don't believe he could be that cold and callous where he didn't even, it didn't faze him. None of the, all of these, now, people will say, well, yeah, he got sick because there was so many shootings going on. If, if, if it phased him, how come he did not do something to show that he was concerned about a community that is rejected? Now, again, you said it here, I said it here, we're not against development. We believe that development is very much necessary, but we have to balance it out. And whenever there is a, you said, you said only 17 houses in a district. Well, that, I don't think that was, I think that was for the city as relates to this side of the, you know, the, where the, where the poorer people live at. I don't think that he did 17 houses in every district. Because, because at some point, we gotta just tell the truth, he just really was only concerned about the development. And that's where he was before he came to the office of mayor. So, so he wanted to make sure his buddies got what they needed to get. And I just hope and trust that we keep our eyes open. And that's a failure that we can blame on more than just him, because the people even changed the rules for the city council. They added to that because he was able to have free rein.
Yeah.
He just had free rein. He had his votes. He knew what he was gonna do. He knew what would get on the agenda, how would we get on the agenda. It was just really too much going on. So I don't know, brother Kobe, but I just hope and trust that we just have a better day. Yeah. Well, last but we're gonna try to hit is your good friend. He's in the news again. And I wanted to bring it back because it just makes you feel good to know that justice is, is starting to reign better. Where the landlord, you know, from North Adams Street is back in the news again. He had, he's being forced literally to sell these properties because it wasn't just Adams Avenue. It was, it was all of his properties. And according to the article I was reading, he just did enough to get through inspection and that was it. And didn't care that these people, you know, can I just say this before you give your opinion on this? You know, when, when you, when you got people who are protected like he is, they do what is required, nothing else. Those tenants were complaining about no heat, no real water running, and nobody paid that any mind. Whenever there was a situation, they'll get a little violation, he'll get it fixed enough just to get them out of their hair. It's egregious. It's horrible.
Well, I will say this. I am glad that he is getting out the business. Him and Mike can go out into the sunset together. You know, since they're best friends. But A.J. Pacorme has officially sold North Adams Street apartments.
I wish we had the money because I would certainly have bought it as a church.
The, the new people have already started work on it. And once they got in, in and saw how much work was needed, they have now changed the projection of when they'll be able to start renting those again. From early 2025 to probably not until June of 2025. That's how much work is gonna have to go into those apartments.
Wow.
But outside of that, he has started selling off the rest of his properties as well too. Like I said, he has dozens and dozens of units throughout the city of Wilmington. And they're not small, right? Some of these buildings, houses are the old classical houses like on Van Buyn Street, that he's converted into three different apartments or four different apartments. So I think altogether, he owns about maybe 40 to 45 different buildings, but the units are in the hundreds. So I am glad that one slumlord is on their way out of the Delaware real estate game and renting game. But there's others like him. And again, this is good. I want to, you know, give a hats off to Kathy Jennings for pursuing this and pushing it even further and doing the right thing here.
Yeah. And, and, and you said his buddy can't cover them all, so I guess.
They could both leave.
Yeah, well, they could both leave.
They could both leave.
You're gonna make somebody mad at you, sir. They're not gonna, they'll be upset with you because you're speaking ill of their, their illustrious mayor who did nothing.
Just let me know when I get to go put the eviction notice on the mayor's.
Can we do that? And by the way, are we allowed? When, when, when is the new mayor sworn?
Nah, they wouldn't let me in their office.
The sweet area. When we put it on the door, we go up on the elevator to the eighth floor and just put it on the door, evicted. But, but when is the new mayor sworn in?
Next Tuesday at 8:00 PM at the Chase Center, 8:15.
With the regular council?
Justice in Street.
Okay. So, so if I go around nine o'clock and put it on the window, is that, see, I don't want to go to jail. I'm afraid of jail. But, but, but we need to put an eviction. And he probably won't come, he won't, he probably won't come to work that day because he.
He's done.
Yeah, he's done. Yeah, well, well, what about some of his cronies? Are they gonna be done too?
Most of them.
Okay, we're not gonna say any names because we're gonna try to be nice. He's the leader, so we're just gonna stick with the leader and say that we will be glad to see him go. And I'm looking forward to a, a better day, a brighter day, you know? I, I believe that now that we have finished this election and Carney has won, based on my interactions with him over the last couple of weeks, months, about a month or so, I'm really feeling, not that he's giving me anything, but I'm feeling good that the people are gonna do well. And you got some good reporting that's getting ready to come up. So we're gonna take some time and look at that. We're gonna, is there anything else you want to?
That's all I have.
Okay, well, we're gonna take a quick commercial break and we're gonna come right back with the Kobe's Corner.
How you doing, community? I'm Alexander Hackett, and I'm here today to talk about Community Staffing Agency. I am the owner of an educational staffing firm. And what we do is we staff all the schools in Delaware with substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, janitorial, and even substitute nurse. So if you have a school and you need our services, please contact me. But also, if you're in a community right now and you're looking for a job, please find me. And the way you can find me is by visiting the communitystaffagency.com, but also get into my direct line, 302-252-8982. Please contact me. Please reach out. If you need assistance with your school or if you're looking to get in the school, Community Staffing Agency is the place to be.
Hey, this is Pastor Curry, pastor of the He's Eye and Fair Baptist Church, Wilmington's most exciting church, the church that love ya, and anything you can do about it. What we're gonna do today is we're gonna have a real good conversation. Yeah, I'm excited. Every Sunday at 11:00 AM. Why don't you call somebody real quick? Tell them Coffee with Curry is on. And let's get after it.
Join us live for our weekly worship. Every Sunday at 9:00 AM. On Facebook and YouTube.
Well, pastor, I'm doing the best I can, but I still gotta have a little Chardonnay and I still gotta have a little this. And I gotta still sneak around. The devil is a liar. That's an excuse.
Wilmington's most exciting church. This land we love belongs to all of us, yet not everyone is treated equally. Right now, millions of Americans are fighting for the things promised to all by the Constitution. Freedom, justice, equality. The ACLU is leading the fight to protect our civil liberties. Together, we can protect and advance our rights nationwide because we, the people, means all of us. Learn how the ACLU is defending the right to vote, free speech, and other civil liberties at myaclu.org.
And we're back. Kobe, what's going on? First, this is, this is your first report for the year. Make sure you're thorough because the people are trying to see if he's coming to us fresh this year.
Listen, it's the same Kobe, I'm back. But unfortunately, we start this year with some sad news. At the age of 100, President Jimmy Carter has passed away. And Jimmy Carter, even though he only served one term, people will remember him for his infectious smile, but then also his humanitarian work. Late into his 80s and 90s, he was still on work sites, building homes for Habitat for Humanity. There has been a great outpouring of bipartisan reflections of the work he's done, both while he was in the White House, but then also why he's been outside of the White House. Earlier in 2024, he surpassed the record for the longest living former president. And I think he was the first president to reach 100 as well too. So again, very sad times. President Biden put out a statement as well to, those two go way back and have a very close friendship as well too. And I also, it's very interesting, when Jimmy Carter was elected to the presidency, he gave up his peanut farm. Because he wanted no perceived conflict of interests. And just in a few more days, we will re swear in, re inaugurate Donald Trump, who has used this office not only for his own personal benefit financially, but for the financial benefit of his family as well too. So again, and his buddies as well too. So again, over these next few weeks, funeral arrangements and stuff are gonna be put out for President Carter. He will lie in state on January 6th to 9th. And then after that, they'll do an official presidential funeral.
He was the first president that I can remember. I didn't vote for him because I, I didn't vote for anybody at that time. I was still a young kid. But that's the first president I remember. And one of the things I often cherished about him is that he had a heart for people. Now, some of his decisions while being president was hard because he had to make some decisions that some people just did not agree with, especially conservatives. But, but it was after he left office that really kept me motivated in that there are people who have a genuine love for humanity. And he really should, he and his wife, you know, really showed their love for humanity. And, and, and while, you know, he, he just transitioned at 100 years old, they thought he was gonna transition two years ago, but he ended up continuing, continuing to live. I often read, remember that scripture that says that God, if you force three scores and 10. Well, what ended up happening is, is, is he got 30 extra. And we are very grateful for, for that. So I'm grateful for that. And I'm glad you brought him up as, as a part of this show.
Yeah. So may he rest in peace. Again, funeral arrangements are coming out. They'll probably do a public funeral on the 9th after he's done lying in state. But if you would like to go pay your respects, you can go down to the U.S. Capitol in Washington, D.C. He'll be in a retunda. Speaking of Washington, D.C. in a retunda, my next point is on January 3rd, the new Congress was sworn in. Which means we now officially have two new members of our three-person delegation. We have U.S. Senator Lisa Blunt Rochester, who is the first African-American and first woman to serve the U.S. Senate from the state of Delaware. She is one of two, well, one of four African-American women ever elected to the U.S. Senate, with two of them being elected on the same time and being sworn in at the same time with, of course, Lisa Blunt Rochester, but then also Maryland's junior senator, Angela Alsos Brooks. So again, this is a historic time for them. And I look forward to seeing what they do in this upcoming session, especially under the Trump administration. On the House side, Sarah McBride was sworn in as Congresswoman, making her the first openly transgender individual to be in the U.S. House, in Congress, period. Sarah officially resigned her position as state senator on January 2nd at 5:00 PM. So again, now this starts the clock for a special election to replace her. The two nominees, the Democratic nominee and the Republican nominee have already been selected by both parties. The Republican nominee is Steve Washington and the Democratic nominee is Dan Cruz.
Steve Washington?
Steve Washington has run for mayor.
Right here in the city. He's a Republican now.
Yes. He ran for this seat in 2020 as a Republican as well too. He ran for mayor as an independent. Dan Cruz ran for SD4, which is now held by Laura Sturgeon for a little bit before dropping out as a Democrat. And he is the, he's now, because of redistricting, he now lives in SD1. He is the Chief Operating Officer of United Way, Delaware. These two, the date has not been set yet for when they will, the actual election will be.
Well, we gotta encourage people to vote because you know, this is where a person can slip in.
Absolutely. So again, that has triggered the special election here. All Congress has been sworn in now. And at the time of this recording, we don't know what's going on with the speakers battle. But last time, it was very interesting. I think we actually got to a whole nother show and still didn't have a speaker. So we will see when I report next week, do we have a speaker or not?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, no, I do want to say this. Let's do as a prediction. We like to do those type of things.
We do.
Do you think by the time we come back on the air again, and we know this is gonna air on Sunday, but do you think by the time we come back on the air, we will have a new speaker?
I think we will. I think it may be two or three rounds at the max this time. Because I definitely think, even though they, Trump and Elon Musk have all come out for Mike Johnson, I think a few members will still try to push the envelope a little bit, not vote for him for one round and then go ahead and vote for him for another.
Now, these individuals who are considered as the hardliners.
Yes.
On the, in the Republican Party, is it that Trump can't, Trump can affect their ability to be reelected, can't he?
Yes, he can.
And how many of them, I don't know if you know this is maybe a really tough question, how many of them are up for reelection?
All of them. Every two years. In the U.S. House, every two years they're all up.
Oh, wow. So that means, yeah, we'll have, okay, now there's my.
The Senate is where it's a little more difficult because they're up every six years, but they're on staggered terms. So we have an election in the U.S. Senate every two years. In Delaware, we have at least two Senate elections every six years. So again, that's why the senators kind of stand their ground a little bit more because, you know, you may forget after a few years that you could do whatever. But then you also have senators who are retiring, like Mitch McConnell, who tanked Matt Gaetz's nomination for Attorney General.
Oh, so that means that there might be some fighting going on.
It could be. And that will be the very interesting to see, not only the speaker fight, but also these confirmation hearings as well too. I know there's a lot of concern behind the Tulsi Gabbard nomination. And I'm also interested to see how the Robert Kennedy one will go as well too.
I think that's gonna go through only because, well, I don't know. I'm careful with my predictions right now because I don't know what these guys, they, Trump got them all scared, so we'll see. We'll see.
Next, I want to talk about a veto that happened right before the New Year's. County Executive MacMyers vetoed the ordinance that would raise the amount developers have to pay to support county services for construction projects. This is what is known as like impact fees. And the county services, it's various different things, but the biggest is EMS, fire services, volunteer fire services. It hasn't been increased or updated since 1999. So it's been 26 years since we've seen an update of these fees. Again, these fees are collected by the county on new development to offset the impact of the community on its services. Like I said, fire department, county facilities, emergency medical services. And the veto, which was shared with county council members the day before Christmas, so Christmas Eve, points to the possible effect that it would have on affordable housing. But members of the county council, they pushed back on that and says that it only benefits the developers.
In most cases it does, but okay.
Yeah. The ordinance was introduced by council members DeDorum, Dave Carter, and Brian Tool, Brandon Tool, sorry. And it passed, I believe with a seven to two vote of the members who were present there. So again, it's gonna be interesting if they try to override the veto or if they try to bring this back once the new county executive is sworn in.
How many county councilmen is, are there?
13.
13. Now, do you know the two who voted against it?
I do not, no.
Okay. Do you know where a street was on this?
I do not, no.
Okay. I didn't get a chance to talk to him about that because, you know, we try to keep all these relationships together and we don't want it to become a problem. But I know when it comes down to like these developers and things, a lot of people's campaigns are funded by that. And they gotta be careful in how they, they, they interact. So we're gonna see what happens with that, when you got seven county members though. Who are saying yay to this and obviously these two. Does, is that, is that enough fee that happens here in the city of Wilmington as well?
Yes, yep. I don't know our rates just yet. I am looking into it. I actually sent the email earlier this week to ask about what are our fees and when's the last time they've been updated as well too. But most municipalities have impact fees.
Okay, very good. All right.
But again, the new county exec will be sworn in next Tuesday, this upcoming Tuesday at ten A.M. at the Route Nine Library at the Black Box. And that is Marcus Henry. So again, I believe most likely they will bring this back if they don't override the veto right away.
Yeah. Well, I think they have enough. You said, how many voted in favor of it?
They have seven. I think they need ten to override a veto.
So, oh, oh, you said who was present?
Who were present.
So they would need three more if.
So I don't know where the people who weren't there attending that meeting will be at on this ordinance either. Next, I want to talk about the transition report that came out for Mayor Carney, who is still governor, but soon to be Mayor Carney. And it highlighted a few things. It talked about, you know, the big picture of Wilmington, creating an action plan to help with things. But one of the things that has been a hot topic has been the homelessness here in the city of Wilmington. You saw, we talked about the response that Mayor Pazicki had to Sam's Church and their faith leader as well, too, Patrick Burke. That has upset a lot of people.
And it should have.
And non-traditional people who are usually upset at Mike Pazicki. A lot of people who have supported him or who have been okay with what he's been doing for years do not think it's right what he is doing right now by attacking this church. And I thought it was very interesting because in this transition report and and with Carney talking about it as well, too, he mentioned that he wants to create a plan of action to help with homelessness in the city of Wilmington, something we have not had in a very long time. But he also wants to create a homelessness council to help better direct services, focus areas, policy, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all residents here in the city of Wilmington. I think that is huge. But also a part of that, again, is improving access to health services, collaborating with local grocers, farmers, and restaurants to expand fresh and affordable and nutritious food options. And also looking at affordable housing development as well, too, is a part of all of that right there. So again, I think he's looking at it at the right way. It has to be a resident-driven comprehensive plan to get this stuff done. And I think this, if he stayed true to this report, then we will be on a very good footing of getting things done. I think you will have a council who will be on board with a lot of this as well, too. And again, the community wants to see change, but they want to see it done in a just way for individuals.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to add, you know, for those of you who are watching, you know, when, when I heard, read, and saw the report that the current mayor sent to the Sam's Church leadership, I just thought it was inhumane. But one of the things that I want those of you who are watching to know is that what he did to the Sam's Church leader is what he's been doing to a lot of the black church leaders, not all of them, because some of them he got in his pocket. And this is the way I believe God does things. He thought, and he got so comfortable with disrespecting church leaders and, and people who want to help the homeless, who want to help the poor, who want to help people who are not developers. He got so comfortable with it that he just felt he can just do what he want to do. And when you saw, you, you read half of the letter on the show, it was scathing. And I'm so glad that it angered people to a place, people who are not traditionally would not be angry. They'd be like, okay, okay, okay. You should have just stuck with, you know, make, taking off the black preachers. You should have went over there. But the service they provide is second to none. Some of the model that I try to use is out of that Sam Church model. Because at the end of the day, every person who's homeless is not there by choice. And we have to start thinking like that. You cannot say, oh, they're poor, get, hide them, put them in some alley somewhere away from everybody else in society. We have to. So what I believe has happened, Kobe, is that now that this has come to the front, I'm grateful that the current, the new mayor that's coming in is saying, you know what, we're going to focus in on it. I do believe he'll get way more support from the city council because there's a lot of you who are there who are hoping that we can get some help with this. And, and it includes more than just giving them a room to stay in. But you've got some, some other services that they will be able to provide. I'm interested. And, and I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not interested in to make money, but I'm interested in it to see where I can help lend a hand to make this a reality because it will help our city. If we take care of our poor. I think God would bless us if we do that.
I agree with you. And, you know, one of the things that I campaigned on was creating a task force to look at a plan of action here in the city of Wilmington for homelessness, something that impacts my area, impacts pretty much every area here in the city of Wilmington. But again, I come from a background of wanting to do it in a caring way to make sure everyone's needs are met, whether it's mental health, whether it's financial health, whatever it may be. We should be trying our best to get people back on their feet. Because it has been the failure of government that has stopped the rise of the rent like crazy here in the city of Wilmington that has put a burden on so many people. They say you're not supposed to pay more than thirty percent of your income to rent. And most people in the city of Wilmington are paying well over fifty percent.
But you know, what they do, how they get away with it, especially for those who are building affordable housing, is that they say thirty, thirty-three percent, they say really is supposed to be of the medium income of that community. So if the median income of the community is, is a thousand dollars, then you will be paying three hundred and thirty dollars, okay? But let me just tell you what, what the real deal is. Once they built that stuff down there at the riverfront, the median income in South Bridge is so high that you can't afford to live in affordable housing. So what I believe in what we're doing with the houses that we're doing is that we're just saying, you know what, you, thirty-three percent of your income, because that's real affordable housing, not thirty-three percent of, 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 of a median income because there's so many other factors that's, that's involved here. But I'm grateful and I'm looking forward to seeing how this is going to unfold, what's going to happen. And let me just say this, I don't say this too often. I trust that he's going to do what he said he's going to do. I trust it. I trust it. You heard me say it here. Now, if I'm wrong, I'll come back and say I was wrong. But I trust that he's going to use this as an opportunity because I think he, he has a heart differently than some other people. And I don't want to keep beating up on that current mayor, this current mayor. But, but the truth of the matter is, it just seemed like there was no soul for people who are less than. You know, and, and none of us are so privileged because most of us are only a paycheck away from being poor. But, but then you, you got your rich friends, so they are what they are. I'm sorry to take up your time.
No, you're good. The last thing I want to talk about is there was two attacks earlier, last, this week, actually. One was a cyber truck exploded on the outside of the Trump Hotel in Las Vegas, Nevada, on Wednesday, January the first. The driver and the person who rented the car was an active-duty U.S. Army Green Beret from Fort Bragg. And then there was also another attack in New Orleans, a city that I go to all the time, a city that I was supposed to be heading to pretty soon for work. Our national president at the Urban League used to be the mayor there. So a lot of our conferences are in New Orleans. But on Bourbon Street, again, famous street, people go out, have fun all times of the night. A man rented a truck, an F-one Ford, F-one fifty, so it's a big, heavy-duty truck, and drove past police and drove down the street, hitting multiple people. I believe the death toll is now over ten individuals with over thirty people injured. But I think it's, it's at even like twelve or thirteen right now who have actually passed away from this attack.
And he got out, then he started shooting, too?
He did get out the truck and the police, after the police pursued for a little bit, he got out the truck firing a firearm and the police returned fire and killed him. The back of the truck had a flag and that flag that was waving was a black ISIS flag. The president reported on that when he flew back from Delaware to, to Camp David to do a press conference on the incident. There are individuals who are in stable condition. But again, there's thirty-five people who are still hurt in this incident who are still, whether it's, they are still in critical condition. So again, praying for their recovery, including the two officers who were harmed as well, too. And again, the individual was killed in both attacks. Neither one of them are alive. So again, i- it's just a very scary time. So I just implore everyone to be very careful out there, especially on a day that's supposed to be so fun, celebrating the New Year. You know, you have multiple people who are not coming home to their families.
Yeah. Do you think a lot of this has to do with Trump being coming the president of the United States? Your opinion, I know it's not factual.
So I think when you demonize other countries and when our current administration takes part in what they're doing over in Gaza right now, you start to grow people who hate you. And then we sit over here, oh, we don't know why this person hated America. And I'm not making excuses for them. But if I saw someone bombing my community, my house, my, you know, my family members, and then celebrating it over and over, I would not like them. I would not sit back, right? Black people here in America, we fought back. We did it in a different manner. But again, we have to take some accountability for giving them fire, for their, giving them fuel for the fire. And what President Trump does, he gives fuel not only to others, but he gives fuel to his base by enraging others. By saying things that will garner fear over here, but hatred in other places. And that's how he's been able to get back to power. And I think we're going to see a lot more of this, unfortunately, over these next four years because of the type of person Donald Trump is.
Yeah, they, they, I've not seen any president who are running for election be, the tip of suicide on the of their, on their lives. Not suicide, homeless.
Assassination.
Assassination, right. I said suicide. Then with him, somebody wants him done. And I thought at one point it was liberals, but it's not liberals. It, it's, it's foreign age. Now, this gentleman, he is American. He's African-American, isn't he?
Yes.
And, 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 and he served in the military.
Yes, another individual from Fort Bragg.
Right. He was from Fort Bragg, too?
Yes, they were both stationed at Fort Bragg.
Oh, wow. We gotta go down to Fort Bragg and find out what's going on, what they doing down there. They, they, people leaving there, hating the country as opposed to loving the country. But I just, I just, I'm just, I'm glad you brought that up to the, to those who are watching us because something is going on. There's something happening. And I, and I wasn't looking at the news that much over the New Year's. But when I, when it came in, I saw it, even at Trump Plaza in, in Las Vegas, I'm like, what is going on here? But I think it's going to be something that's going to be going on and on. And we just got to be very careful and vigilant in what we're doing.
Yeah. And the, the only thing I'll say about Fort Bragg, and I forget what they changed the name to. But Fort Bragg is a huge military installation in North Carolina. And they have multiple Army Special Operation Unit. So these two were both there. It's believed that they weren't, their time didn't overlap, but they were both highly trained from, from Fort Bragg.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And speaking of the assassination attempt that went viral where Trump put his fist up in the air, the young man who shot at Trump, he also had visited Fort Bragg's multiple times leading up to that attack as well, too. So again, that is three connecting all that Fort Bragg.
Wow. Wow, I didn't know that one. You just gave me a piece of information I just did not know. Something is going on with Fort Bragg and Trump. And, and we're going to see as, we're going to keep our eyes open. We, we're going to be vigilant. And we're going to see which way life goes as it relates to Trump's presidency. Real quick prediction before we go to our, 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 our break. Who's going to be the next nominee for president of the United States on the Democratic side? I know it was a far-fetched statement.
That is, that is. I really like the governor of Maryland, Wes Moore. I think he has a very good opportunity, but I think it'll probably either be Gavin Newsom or Gretchen Whitmer.
Okay. And why, why would you not think it would be Pennsylvania's governor?
So he has a lot to deal with up in Pennsylvania right now. And he has shown that he's also not a party builder as well, too. Pennsylvania has not only flipped for the presidential, but they lost all their state wives since he's been governor, except for his own position in the lieutenant governors.
That's how Trump do it. Everybody lose but him. So that's why we need, and who's going to be the Republican?
I think it's going to be J.D. Vance.
You think so?
Yeah, they, they love him. I think it's going to be between, it's going to be a tight con, uh, contest at first between him and DeSantis for a little bit. But I think after a while.
What about, what about Junior?
I don't think Junior runs for it.
Okay, you don't think he runs for it? Yeah, because he ain't got to stand in the middle.
He's not his dad.
He's not his dad. Okay. What we're going to do is we're going to take a quick commercial break and we'll be right back.
Smiles are powerful. A simple smile can light up a whole room. And for twenty-five years, Smile Train has been lighting up the world with smiles. And each smile marks a step towards a brighter future. As the world's largest cleft lip and palate charity, Smile Train has supported more than two million life-changing cleft surgeries in over ninety countries, leaving a legacy of resilience, joy, and beaming smiles for generations of children. To learn more about cleft lips and palates and how Smile Train is supporting the cleft community all over the world, please visit SmileTrain.org/learn. Smile Train, lighting up the world with smiles for twenty-five years.
I'm Nahim Hines, professional football player and proud supporter of the Muscular Dysphypathy Association. My mom was diagnosed with muscular dystrophy when I was fourteen, and I watched her struggle. But MDA helped her get the best treatments and care, and they also help kids like my buddy Ethan.
My name is Ethan. Thanks to the Muscular Dysphypathy Association and people like you, I have more hope than ever before. From day one, they treated me like family at my local care center. MDA is the only one that funds over one hundred and fifty care centers across the U.S. to help provide state-of-the-art care for adults and kids like me.
MDA has been transforming the lives of people living with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and other related neuromuscular diseases. They fund the research for breakthrough treatments, care, and cures. And MDA provides supports to thousands of families like mine and Ethan's in communities like yours. Thanks to MDA, kids and adults can live life to its fullest. Join us and learn more at MDA.org today.
One more time before you wake up in the wild. In your eyes, I see your flowers slowly dying.
Together with the Nature Conservancy, you have the power to make a difference. For unspoiled nature, for beautiful wildlife, and for people everywhere. Together, we can find a way to ensure that all life on earth can thrive. Our natural world needs us now. Every day, we lose more lands, waters, and the wild species that depend on them. To learn more, visit nature.org today.
I'm Christopher Holton. I'm very active. It was a Saturday morning. Normally I go for a normal walk.
With no warning, Chris suffered a near fatal heart attack. But thankfully, Brian Buckley, a bystander, saw him collapse and rushed to help.
He did this big gasp for air and then just stopped. It's like I went into autopilot. Is like all that training I did back in the day around CPR just, just magically came out of nowhere.
Because of the CPR training that Brian received, Chris did make it and didn't die on the trail that day. CPR training provided by the American Heart Association.
Looking at your hands, these two hands could save a life.
Being a father, you want to be around, you want to be around for your kids.
Heart disease is America's number one killer. To learn more about how the American Heart Association helps save lives, go to HelpHeart.org. Life can throw a lot at us, but what helps us through it is knowing we have a place where we feel loved. Life can throw a lot at us, but what helps us through it is knowing we have a place where we feel loved, grounded, and safe. A place where we belong, a place called home. But for thousands of youth living on the streets, there's no such thing as home. Out here, it's a predatory world that can destroy lives forever. At Covenant House, we care for homeless and at-risk youth. Working in communities just like yours, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Here, these kids will get a shower, clean clothes, nourishing meals, and a safe place to sleep. Our caring staff teach life skills, offer stability, and encourage kids to believe in themselves so they stay off the streets for good. We're committed to giving lost, scared, and hurting children a place to go, a place they call home. To help or get help, go to SafePlaceToSleep.org.
The challenges our planet's animals are facing sometimes feel a bit heavy.
Animals haven't eaten in a day, two days. They haven't drank anything. They're old, they're dehydrated.
As soon as we started our descent, everywhere I could see was mud, just absolutely mud.
The country has been prolonged for drought so long, it was like a tinderbox waiting to go up.
Okay, very heavy. Each of us wants to be part of the solution, and we can be. Remember that there's good happening right now at home.
All right, we were able to get into the unit and we have all four of your cats.
And around the world, for any animal in any disaster. So let's focus on that, right? Be part of the solution, one rescue at a time. Search IFA.org forward slash disaster ready.
Hey boss, you okay?
I said I'm fine. This has been really, really hard for me.
And we're back. Well, Kobe, this is the first show of the year, so I didn't know, well, how much I could pick your brain. But we know we're getting ready to have this election, not election, but we're getting ready to have our city council be sworn in.
Yes.
City that both you and I love dearly. You've been here all of your life. I've been here for the last 25 years, 20 years, excuse me. And I'm, I'm now wondering, do you think that the city council will be made whole again with the president getting back its power? Not, I'm, again, for, for your answer, I'm not interested in personality. I'm interested in a government working effectively.
Yes.
Now, do you believe that the office of president for the city council will be returned?
Yes, and the rules are officially up. The draft legislation is up on the website to meet the seven-day requirement. Anyone can go look at it. We have returned the power to the council president. It's the only resolution for rules that is being introduced. To give him the power to handle not only personnel, but the agenda and stuff like that.
Amen. Now, again, the reason why I was so adamant on, and, and not that I'm the only person, there's many people who certainly shared this sentiment. But the reason why I was so adamant is that we have to give, hold people accountable. There's no way we can hold the president of the city council accountable if he or she does not have the power to handle their position. For all these years, it was always handled because a person lost an election, they decided, let's take all the power from the person who's gonna get it. That's just not good. Some of the things that happened, Kobe, in my opinion, and you, you're good with correcting me if I'm wrong. But some of the things that happened would not have happened had the office had its power.
Correct, yes.
Because how did y'all bring stuff to the floor? How did they bring stuff to the floor?
So they gave that power to a staffer to set the agenda, to be able to control when things got on the agenda. Because they did not agree with who the council president was. And thought that he would use the power that he was duly elected to use to stop what they were trying to get done.
Now, isn't that slapping democracy in the face?
Yes, it is.
Because if democracy says this is who we want as, as the president, then we need to let them keep their power. So I was not a crazy little black preacher saying what, stuff off the top of my head when I said that was just totally wrong and inhumane. No, I'm sorry, unpoli, unright to do such, such a, such a reaction. The last thing I, I want to do with coming down to the city council, you have how many members of the city council? I'm doing this as an education piece.
13.
13 members of the city council, all positions are filled. We have one Republican, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
And, and, and now that we have a full house, do you feel, as you're doing your projections, do you feel that we will have a year of productivity?
I think so. I, I think we will. I think what goes into that as well, too, are the committees as well. So again, I think you have people on these committees who are interested in the fields that the committee line up with. Who want to do good, who want to get good policy out, and want to work with the community to get stuff done as well, too. Even though there's only three new members going on, it feels like a breath of fresh air.
Yeah, I, I've certainly, it, it is. Now, speaking of committees, is anything public yet of who?
Yes.
Okay, good, so we can talk about that for next conference. Cause I was, I don't like to put you in no bad position. Who's in charge of finance?
So the finance chair will be fourth district councilwoman Michelle Harley.
Okay.
She will be the chair and then at-large councilwoman Letitia Tish Bracy will be the vice chair.
Amen.
Yes, and the rest of the members on that are second district councilwoman Shanae Darby, at-large councilman Alex Hackett. Third district councilwoman Xanthea Oliver and at-large councilman James Padola.
Wow, you, 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 black people are trying to take over that finance committee. I gotta, I gotta keep an eye on you. Excellent, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with that. There's another committee, the, the, isn't there police and?
Yes, so public safety, so public safety. Yolanda McCoy, sister district councilwoman is the chair. At-large councilman James Padola is vice chair, Tish Bracy is on it, Shanae Darby's on it, Chris Johnson's on it, and Xanthea Oliver's on it.
Chris Johnson's still a, a city council person?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't heard his name too much.
Is the former finance chair. So I, I believe of the returning chairs, he's the only one who's not chairing anything this go round. Some of the other committees are his community development and urban planning. The chair of that is councilwoman at-large Maria Cabrera, Shanae Darby is the vice chair. Eighth district councilman Nathan Field is also on it. Councilman Alex Hackett, Yolanda McCoy, Kobe Owens, and Christian Willhaller are also on that committee. For education, youth, and family services, Tish Bracy is the chair, Alex Hackett is the vice chair. Yolanda McCoy, Michelle Harley, Xanthea Oliver, and Kobe Owens are on that committee. For intergovernmental, Shanae Darby is the chair, Tish Bracy is the vice chair, and Christian Willhaller is also on that committee. For public works in transportation, Xanthea Oliver is the chair, Nathan Fields is the vice chair, Chris Johnson, Kobe Owens, and Christian Willhaller are on that committee. And the last committee is health, environmental, aging, and disabilities. Kobe Owens, me, I will serve as chair. I'm super excited about that. Christian Willhaller will serve as vice chair, Maria Cabrera, Nathan Fields, Alex Hackett, and Chris Johnson are also on those committees as well.
One of the committee, I heard you say that, I wasn't familiar with it, that's the intergovernment committee. What did they do?
Yes, so intergovernmental is a newer committee. It was started in the last session. What most municipalities that have stuff like that, they're the ones who coordinate. If we're sending something down for a charter change or something like that, it goes to that committee. Major grants and stuff that we go for from federal, state, or county should go through that committee. I think it'd probably be joint between the intergovernmental and finance as well, too. But that's where those, that's usually what that committee does.
Well, good. I believe that we're gonna be off a good start. We're gonna keep up, we're gonna keep you updated on what's going on with our city. As things happen, we're not gonna bring, we're not gonna become a nest of negativity, but what we will do is just share truth. And we're not gonna put you on the spot, Kobe, to be able to report things. But what I love about you is that you know what you need to report, you know what you need not to report. So this is a good thing and you're a team builder, so we appreciate you so very much. Kobe, you have anything else on your calendar for us today?
That's all I have today.
Alright, you gonna come back next week or you gonna be in New Orleans or in somewhere around the world?
I will be back next week.
Well, I'm looking forward to seeing you next week. Say, until the next time we get together, may the God bless you.
Take care, y'all.
You've been watching The Source. With host Dr. C.T. Curry. And co-host Kobe Owens. Tune in every Sunday at 5 p.m. Thanks for watching, and don't forget to subscribe for the latest episodes.